Welcome, anyone who might be tuning in. And if you are tuning in at a later time, we're glad that you're paying attention to the matters before the Planning Commission. This is the Thursday, June 18th meeting, and it's a regular meeting because of the change in the ordinance, which is the new regular meeting time of six o'clock. I need to read an announcement, you know, from the Governor's Executive Order. I'll do that now. "This meeting is being conducted utilizing teleconferencing and electronic means consistent with Governor Newsom's Executive Order N 2920 regarding the COVID-19 pandemic. The live stream of the meeting may be viewed on the city's CTV Channel 3 and/or online at the at the line of code that's on the agenda. In accordance with the Governor's Executive Order, the public may participate in the meeting using the following steps and go to the Planning Commission Agenda to get that information." My first effort is not to read everything else on the Agenda preparation material, but to hold the meeting to order and to identify that the Commissioners are all here. In fact, I'll quickly announce that Mark Sekan, Peter Kraut, Michael Harrison, John Mueller, and Wendy Fosberg. And I don't see, I mean, there's six of us? Nobody's missing. And I would ask Mark Sekan if you'd lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag.
Certainly. If you wish to stand, or you should stand, please stand.
You don't need to, just, you know.
And there's our, and there's our flag.
Yeah.
So after me, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Are there any needs to make any additions or changes to the agenda?
There are none. Nope.
Okay, then, kind of a motion to approve the agenda as it is presented?
So moved.
Second.
That was Peter and Wendy.
Okay, Peter and Wendy, first, I mean, motion and second. Hearing no objection, we'll operate on this agenda. Great. Any announcements or introductions that need to be made?
None here. No, none here.
Nope.
I will just make one announcement that is, I think, good for the city, and that is that there is a new website. So if you go to cityofcalabasas.com, wander around, take a look, it's, I'd say, a lot more user-friendly, but everything is in kind of a different place. So give it a little time, you'll find that it's a lot easier to use and a little more robust. And thanks to the staff members who worked on it, made it functional. I'm going to go to our first item, which is Oral Communications and Public Comment. This is for citizens wishing to address the Commission on Matters that are not on the agenda. I don't believe we had any correspondence, and I haven't seen any participants from the public looking to speak at oral communications. Anybody on the staff know any different?
Good evening, Commissioners. This is Michael Klein. I'm looking at the attendee list, and there is no one currently that has raised their hand.
Okay. If our actions tonight do, in fact, entice some folks to speak, we'll ask them to speak at the end of the meeting on matters that are not on the agenda. First item of business is the Consent Agenda, and it's the approval of the minutes of May 21st, 2020. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes?
Yes, Dennis, I have a correction of those. On page three, if I might.
Sure.
The middle paragraph regarding my recusal.
Yes.
It says that 652 Vice Chair Kraut announced a need to recuse himself from involvement with the Commission's consideration on the next item on the agenda due to a, and I need to change this to, due to a financial interest related to the applicant, but not involved with the project or property.
Okay, that's the way I remember you actually making the recusal, so. If we would just reflect that in the additions to the, or changes to the minutes when we make an approval, if there's nothing else, then they'll be included, all right?
Thank you.
Anybody have any objections to that? Any further additions or corrections to the minutes? Can I have a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
So moved. Second.
Again, hearing no objection, I'm not going to ask for a rule call, though, I think it's unanimous, or you would change the minutes. Okay, next item of business is Old Business, which is our item two, which is Continued Discussion on Amending the City's Story Pole Procedures. And there's probably a staff report. Who's going to conduct that?
Good evening, Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. I don't really have a presentation for you, but I can keep my comments relatively brief. First, I want to point out that in the original Agenda Packet, I had attached an older version of the story pole procedures. They were later amended in 2016. And the only amendment really was, it happened to follow some exclusions from ridgeline rules. And so the story poles are typically allowed for ridgeline projects. However, certain minor additions and accessory structures were exempted from the ridgeline ordinance, and therefore, those are also exempted from story poles. So that's the only difference in the two. Just wanted to make that clear for you. You should have all received a copy of that, and it was posted on the city's website as well for the public. So I want to point that out, and then also want to point out that we do have two public correspondents that have been submitted, by one by Carl Erlich and one by Joanne Sowara, that you should have also received those.
I did.
So, my staff report, this really dates back, and I forget now which meeting, I guess, September 2019. It was Commissioner Harrison had brought up at a meeting that there was some difficulty in seeing the outline of the roof on the story poles because of the type of material that was being used, and he expressed an opinion that it'd be a kind of that bright orange mesh fencing, like a construction fencing. So he requested that the Council consider those amendments. We brought it to Council, and they would like to hear your opinion before they consider changes to the ordinance right now. I don't think staff really has an opinion of this. I know, I've been looking at story poles for the better part of 18 years and all sorts of different materials, and I can see them just fine. But it's completely up to you guys, if you want a different material that makes them stand out a little bit more, we're open to that. The only issue that I would point out as you discuss this, as actually Carl Erlich so eloquently points out, is that depending on the density of the material and the height of the pole, you might have issues with wind loading. The West Village Project, as you all are aware of, that came before you last July, has had poles come down, and they use the flags. They were particularly high poles, and we had a rather nasty winter. But, you know, just to let you know, the poles can come down without a denser material, let alone a thicker material. So just want you guys to keep that in mind as you discuss what amendments that you might want to make to the procedures. So that's all I have. I'm available for questions.
I have a question of you, Glenn. The revised or the updated story pole ordinance that you, or policy that you sent, did address the issue of flags and, I think it said fabric, I'm not looking at the copy of it, but it looked like the mesh recommendation that I think Commissioner Harrison would like to have discussion on might fit within that description, unless, Michael, you think otherwise. But, you know, that one paragraph did end with flags or, you know, fabric or mesh fabric, something to that effect.
I mean, that's correct. It doesn't prohibit that. It does say colored ribbons or construction netting, which I think is what Commissioner Harrison was talking about. Not larger than three feet wide shall be attached between the poles to detail the roof lines. So I mean, with that in mind, too, it could be a policy direction or amending the procedures, one or the other could work. We can certainly attempt as much as possible to put up a denser kind of material if that works, but I think from, on a case-to-case basis, we're going to have to consider the height of the pole and the potential for those poles to come down.
I have a question. Does anyone know whether the construction mesh is going to be more expensive than the flags? Is that kind of a given?
I don't know offhand. I can't imagine it would be much more expensive. I've seen construction sites that probably purchased large rolls of that construction fencing and just cut it as they need to. It's plastic, you know, so maybe there's a slight increase cost to that. I can't imagine it's that much.
Well, Michael, since you had some prepared comments on that, why don't you bring us up to speed on
Sure.
on this, there's other questions of Glenn.
Oh, sure. And, you know, for anybody watching, I realize this has been quite a year. In the last six months, we've seen so many so many difficult and tragic things that some people may think, why are we even talking about story poles? Because it seems insignificant in light of what's happened, but for some of us, we're the fortunate ones, life will go on, and where we live and where even more of us are working now is as important as ever. So the purposes of the story poles are already, the purpose is already outlined in the staff report. I'm just raising concerns about the implementation of the procedures. It started with the West Village Project, but I also raised it in the Habad Project. Fortunately for the West Village Project, there was a large billboard in the front with photos of the project, and I think those were far more visible than the flags, those photos. For the Habad Project, the blue flags, as I mentioned before, were not visible in the sky above. I mean, as you're looking above and you see blue flags, it's hard to see with a blue sky. And plus, there was screening by all the vegetation in the front. So I think a large photo there, a big photo on a billboard, would have been far more effective. And I asked for that, and the applicant was willing to do that, probably preferred doing that as opposed to the story poles. And I think that neighbors in Claridge would have seen the photos a lot more than they saw the flags. They didn't see the flags, and they didn't all get notice from the city. So on page two of the existing procedures, only ribbons and construction netting are allowed. Flags are not permitted, and you can't just say flags and ribbons are the same thing. That's like saying blond hair is the same as red hair. They're just not the same. The ribbons that they're talking about look like a police tape, but they're not yellow. Usually, they're bright orange or magenta or lime green, some very bright glowing color. And orange construction netting is the norm in many jurisdictions, and the only permitted material, but I think it's far more visible than the flags. If the orange construction netting is too heavy, then, again, I think a photo on a billboard would be far better than the flags, and that's allowed under the procedures. And then I have one more comment, because one of the council members asked me a couple times about the blue flags, or why I objected to blue flags at Habad, and I think that's kind of a slippery slope to go down. And Matt, you may even chime in, I think it's almost unconstitutional, because he said, well, it's Habad, it should have blue flags, you know, blue flags, but I don't think that's right. I don't think we should use blue flags for Habad, or green flags for a mosque, or black ones for an AME church. I don't think
Color can't, we never change our land use protocols at all based on the creed of a particular religious institution, not one bit.
But this is This was brought up by a council member who asked why I objected to the blue flags. I objected because you couldn't see them very easily with the sky above, but he implied that they were blue because it was for Habad. And I think we shouldn't have colors that, you know, that identify the religious or racial identity of the applicant, but really, the purpose here is to show the dimensions of the project, not who's the applicant. I was really troubled by that. Anyway, in the end, I think the procedures don't really need to be modified regarding the materials, because it's already in there. It's ribbons or construction netting. And photos on billboards are also permitted, if the staff thinks that would be better. I just don't think the flags are permitted. And as far as these other sections about applicability and the exemption section, I mean, that's a different conversation, I think, for maybe a different time. Unless Commissioners want to speak about that. So I think it's the implementation.
Well, my question would be, if, why are flags being used rather than ribbons if they are indeed different things? And are flags the most accepted in the industry in terms of the material being used? And if so, should it be reflected in the procedures?
Well, I can answer, just by my experience, in 18 years, I've seen all sorts of different materials used in all sorts of creative ways, and if it's not visible, at least to us as a staff, we would have them change the material that's going to be on it. I'm not sure, really, flags versus ribbons, that to me, they're kind of similar enough. I mean, they kind of do the same thing. I realize they're not exactly the same, but you know, a strip of plastic hanging down from a string, whether it's, you know, an inch or two wide and hanging down in a square or a triangle, seems pretty similar to me.
I mean, at the end of the day, isn't the point just for it to be visible?
Correct, yeah. You're right.
But I didn't think the blue flags were visible at Habad, and I also objected to the color. I don't know whose idea that was, and I also don't think the orange flags were visible at the West Village Project, especially for all the buildings in the back. The photo was visible, and I think that was a good solution. In fact, at Habad, I would have preferred a photo and no flags.
But isn't all of that, other than the color of the flags at Habad? Isn't all that in the procedures, anyway?
Yes, I think it's, as I said, I think it's the implementation.
As an option.
Yeah, I think it's in the implementation. The flags are not permitted, but the ribbons are, and the photo is an option, the staff can ask for that. And I think, like in Habad, I would have said no flags, because it wasn't effective and it burdened them. But a photo in the front, which the architect said he could do, would have been easier to see.
John, you have a comment? You probably want to unmute yourself if you're muted.
Am I on now?
Yes, you are.
Okay, just a couple of points. I read the procedure again, and I did a redline version of the existing modified current procedure because I think that there are some unclear provisions throughout. Now, of course, I did this at the last minute, and Glenn hasn't even had a chance to see it, and none of you has either. But I want to, I understand Michael's issue is really what's before us tonight. But I think there are grammatical and other substantive things about the procedure in general that need to be tidied up at the appropriate point. It's not any major revision, it's just kind of cleaning stuff up. So I will have Glenn at the appropriate, I'll ask him at the appropriate time, not tonight, but in the future, to share that with everybody. I didn't think it was appropriate for me to just send it out globally. So that's one thing I wanted to mention. Another thing, on the netting, are we talking about that orange netting that is often seen, that we have people put up around oak trees? Is that the kind of netting?
Yeah. Okay. It's just narrower. It's not, I mean, it's not the same size as the full fence netting, but it's the same material.
And so is it your thought, Michael, that that netting would be sort of the same size in terms of height of the flags that now are often used?
Well, it says, I believe, no more than three feet wide. You know, in some places like Malibu, or in, I have a friend who lives in Carmel, I mean, that's all they're allowed to use. They're not allowed to use anything else.
So they, what, hang it, they hang it across story poles?
Right.
I see. I mean, I personally have had no problem with the colors or the flags. I don't think the flags are, while they're not prohibited, they're just not stated in the procedure. So I personally haven't had difficulty in imagining what it's like. I would even comment that on the West Village, I mean, I can see the flags as I'm driving east on the 101, as I kind of get over the rise, I can see them. And I was thinking to myself, if that were all netting. Now, I should drop a quick footnote to say, we don't expect story poles to be up frequently as much as the West Village. But it would be very unattractive, it seems to me, that if you have a big project like that, to have the netting there up for a year. But again, that's sort of a unique situation. So I'm kind of ambivalent, to be honest with you. I mean, if it's only netting instead of flags, it doesn't make a big difference to me. I can see them all equally. But if others have a strong opinion, or people have an experience, and Michael, you've commented that you know that many jurisdictions use netting, which suggests that that they have concluded they're probably more visible than other materials. So, oh, one other point I wanted to make on the photos. Am I wrong, Glenn? It was my impression that the photos were there as an additional option for commercial buildings.
That's correct, and I was going to bring that up, too. Right now, it's required for commercial projects.
So I don't know if the Habad was a commercial project, but
It wasn't considered a commercial project, no.
Okay, so they, so, and that may be something, Michael, that you want us to consider in addition, are there, is the photo simulation or rendering appropriate in circumstances more than just the commercial?
Because I Right, I think it leaves it up to staff, which is fine, but again, in Habad, I think the photo would have shown everything, and the ribbons, you had to get out of your car, go out, look at them, I mean, not the ribbons, the flags. And it was a disservice. People in Claridge, for example, did not know about it.
Yeah. Yeah, so I think that's a good point, that there may be circumstances other than commercial, where a photo simulation would be appropriate. Is that Glenn up to staff now? Could you have on a residential property require them to do a photo simulation?
The procedures right now are pretty clear, applies to commercial only. So we may want to, if that's your desire, to open it up to other types of project. With maybe one small caution, that I'm sure there was a certain amount of thought put into the cost, because this is an extra cost for a homeowner to bear. You know, you talk about a larger home builder or a commercial operator, and maybe that cost isn't quite as painful, but for a homeowner, you know, every little thing counts sometimes. And rendering, while they're not a huge cost, they're, in addition to story poles, which are another added cost.
No, I would have said they wouldn't have to do story poles at Habad. I think that was ineffective. I would have, I would give the staff the discretion to say, no, here's a case where a photo on a billboard would be better than story poles.
Yes, Peter.
I think that's a point I want to object to. We do require photos or visual aids in addition to story poles for commercial projects. And I would be opposed to anything that would get rid of the story poles in lieu by providing a photo. It's important to remember that the benefit of the story poles is you can walk around the area in front of the site and see the building from many different angles. And too many times, when we give an applicant the requirement to produce a rendering or a photo simulation, the angle that he chooses to take it from is very opportunistic and doesn't show the mass next to an adjacent structure or the silhouetting of the hillsides behind him. So the story poles are an essential part of our process here. And I, too, would agree that it's probably too expensive to be putting that burden on a homeowner. But I like our procedures just as they are. The one thing I would consider, I think we were here to talk about, was orange netting in lieu of flags or ribbons. Again, I, too, myself can see these things very easily. I'm in the industry, I work with buildings a lot. And we got to remember that our story poles are not only for the decision makers, but they're also there for the neighbors, and it says so right in the purpose of our story poles. So Michael's proposal to make them more visible is probably not a bad one. I don't think it's going to add a significant cost to this. But on the other hand, I'm not 100% sure it's necessary. As I wrap up here, I'm noticing that we do have a hand up among attendees, but I believe this is a discussion item, not a public hearing. If that's correct, somebody
We still need, we'll still need to take comment at some point on the item, though.
No, okay, so I'd like to end my thoughts there and listen a little bit longer.
Any other Commissioner comments?
I could add my comments at this time. So I, too, don't have an issue with seeing the flags the way it's been done. I think that staff has done a good job as they have reviewed the methodology in preparing the story pole. I've never had an issue seeing what's been erected in the field. However, it got from these guidelines to the field, the plan and approval and installation. I agree with John that there are, if you read this procedures carefully, there are areas that probably should be tweaked a little bit in order to say what we mean. Because I think that there's some gray area in the words here, but, and I also think on the rendering, I've always been a big proponent of rendering, especially on large projects, where the mass of ribbons or netting or whatever is being used is sometimes confusing to see from any vantage point. And I think being able to see a rendering and being able to look at the field and then come back to the rendering and notice what line represents what portion of the building is very important. And I think on those complicated projects, and some of them are at times difficult to do completely. There are environmental constraints, there are topographical constraints that kind of sometimes limits the amount of that roof line that we're able to show. I think then, in particular, the rendering has been beneficial, and I think we've always required it. I think that's something that we've always kind of required that. So I would like to see that story pole procedure kind of emphasize that a little more and give us a little more latitude to require it upon the review, both us and staff. In terms of the colors and the fabric and the material, I don't have a problem with the way it is, because so far, I've been able to see it, either with the help of the rendering or not. And I think staff has done a good job. So if staff has some reasons to tweak the language and give them some more opportunity and flexibility to require different materials in particular circumstances, I certainly support that, but I don't have a problem the way it's been done in the past.
And I would tend to agree with John and Mark, and to a certain extent, Peter. I have had no, I've had no problem seeing the story poles, seeing the flags. And that includes, as I have driven by Habad, I could see the story poles. It has just not been an issue. And given that the procedures specifically give alternatives, I believe that staff has always had the latitude. If one thing or another was appropriate in particular circumstances. it's been, it's been required. I, it, it, indeed, there have been times where this commission has required some type of rendering in addition to the story poles when it was appropriate. Um, and that's under John's comments aside, I agree, there are, there are some things that need to be tweaked here. There are some things that need to be clarified. But the basic underlying procedures um, work as far as I'm concerned.
I saw that, uh, John, you had your hand up, so.
Yeah, I, I have a question, Glenn. And maybe, I can't remember if the Chabad was, was a situation like this. What happens? The, 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 the normal course is that we don't get involved in the story pole determine, we, the planning commission, don't get involved if, if the city uh, staff instructs a project applicant that it wants X, number of story poles or whatever, and then if that's agreed to, we don't have to deal with it. So um, we're talking sort of generally now about giving staff broader uh, discretion, including netting, which is already in the procedure, including flags, um, including renderings. What happens, and have there been situations where the applicant says, you're asking too much? I wanna go to the planning commission and get this reduced. Has that happened?
Yeah, it has. In fact, it happened with the West Village project. I might remember that, but um, the, the, the thought for the commission at the time was, it was too much less. And they needed to put some more poles up. So at the end of the day, the, the applicant had agreed to put some more poles up. Um, I think over set a seventy-five percent threshold, but before that threshold is fifty percent, and they are proposing less than fifty percent.
Right. So, but am I generally correct that it's the story pole uh, determinations are a staff determination unless there's a problem?
That's correct. And the director has the ability to send this to the architecture review panel for an extra set of eyes and, and an opinion about that as well.
So, so maybe what we're really talking about is revising the, the uh, I don't know what they're called, procedures, to, to better clarify the staff's discretion, both in terms of its ability to, to demand, order, whatever word you wanna use, netting, or flags, or rendering, or some combination thereof. And then, if that becomes too burdensome for the applicant, they have the ability to uh, I guess I'd call it an appeal, or bring it to the planning commission for a final determination. Say all that, Michael, but that's not that hard to get to.
No, that, the Chabad case did that too. They came to us and asked to remove some, and I said, I said, why not just put up a photo? And they were willing to do that, and, but that didn't happen.
And that really wasn't, I, I think that's a great idea. I just don't think that's part of the procedure right now.
Oh, okay.
Well, let me, uh, Matt, I wanna ask your help on a couple of things here. Clearly, uh, there's a number of opinions and a number of recommendations and clarifications in the procedure document itself. But um, ultimately, our job this evening is to have this discussion and make recommendations to the council. And also make sure that the staff is um, aware of the experience of the commissioners in dealing with the several items that we've been talking about. So, sorry about that video there. They'll be back. If you would help us figure out what we might need to do here, uh, I have some technical comments as well as other commissioners have had. But um, ours is a recommendatory function this, this evening. Isn't that correct?
Yeah, so if the commission is uh, has majority support for one or more changes to the procedures, what we'd recommend would be a motion to uh, recommend a bulleted list of changes that would then, staff would package in a staff report, much like the one you've got tonight, but add in that planning mission voted to recommend X, Y, and Z changes. And then bring that to the council uh, for them to review and consider, and whether to direct preparation of a revised document. I think at this point, we wouldn't recommend redlining it pending council confirmation on those proposed changes.
You would or would not recommend?
I, at this point, I think we should bring it to council as a bulleted list of recommendations in the staff report before redlining the document. I see Maureen has her hand up, so she may have, the director may have an adjustment to that recommendation.
Sure. And then one, one last point that requires your attention. Um, is this ultimately something that gets embedded in an ordinance?
We have an ordinance that requires story poles per the story pole guidelines. I don't think we'd be changing the ordinance, we'd just be changing the guidelines.
Well, and that's. Obviously, procedures and guidelines, you know, they need to be flexible enough to respond to the, everything from the terrain to the budget to the nature of the project and the climate of the community. I mean, all those things matter. So we're not recommending any changes to an ordinance, only to, uh, I guess opine on our experience with uh, the various materials and the various outcomes that we're hoping from posting the various things, including um, the potential of being more specific about mesh and flags and, and photographs of, of the site. Is that right?
Yes, in, in short, it's, it's about making a recommendation on these changes. And I'll, I'll invite the director for further.
Maureen, you had, you had a comment.
Thank you. Um, I've been uh, keeping track of all of your comments. What I understand is that effectively Commissioner Harrison has three proposals in front of you. The first is to eliminate the potential for flags as a stringing mechanism. The second is a request to require mesh and mesh only. And the third is for bright colors, uh, that the use of colors like blue as a unique preference to a group would not be favored because it would be less visible. So those are what I understand to be the three proposals. I heard that the commission gave opinions with regard to the flags. I heard that five commissioners were comfortable with the flags when, when uh, elected. I heard that, I did not hear any of the commissioners uh, supporting endorsement to mesh, but I heard no comments with regard to Commissioner Harrison's request to only have bright colored materials for the stringing mechanism.
Well, I, I think it was more that I didn't want blue, which you can't see from the sky, and I didn't want a color that identified the applicant rather than depict the project. I think that's not, I think it's unconstitutional. I mean, I, I just don't think you can do that.
Well, this, to be clear, the city never required that color. That was the applicant's choice.
I think that's a slippery slope to go down.
Well, I think the council will hear our comments and directly and through the staff.
Could, could I make, could I make one additional comment, Dennis?
Yes, please. And, and I also have a technical item that I wanna bring up as well.
I just wanna, I just wanna mention that, you know, I think John brought up a good point that I hadn't really uh, reflected on, that we are only involved when there is a request to modify staff's interpretation of the guidelines and do something less or different than what staff had recommended, or that they, how they had read the guidelines. So we, we are very, we have a, we're involved in a very limited basis and in only very difficult projects. Because at least for myself, and I think a couple of other commissioners have expressed a support for what has been done in the past, I would kind of throw the question back to staff that is there something in the guidelines that you think could be modified to allow yourselves to better implement this with all the things that we've been discussing? Because it is really you who are successfully, in my opinion, implementing the guidelines. But if there are ways to modify the guidelines to make your uh, job easier and make your, you know, requirements and implementation uh, more effective, then, then I think that should be spoken about too. I don't recall that you've actually expressed any, any uh, recommendation from modify the guideline. So you're, I'm assuming then you're comfortable with them and have no, no recommended changes?
Yeah, Maureen, go ahead.
I would, um, I would say allow us to bring that back to the group to see if staff had any particular items that they would like to see either clarified. Maybe now it's a very good time for the commissioners to send a red line to other ideas. Tentatively, we have this item going back to the city council, either the first or second meeting of August, which gives us July to come back to you based on what we're hearing this evening for another meeting to say, would this be a revised document as guidelines that you could support? We can include clarification to um, staff's uh, discretion. We can include um, ideas with regards with these tweaks um, that, that maybe all of you would like to have clarity on and just bring that forward. If we could bring back a draft document to you, it wouldn't be probably large modifications, but maybe um, you'd see any ideas you send to us, we could come back.
You're here.
If I could add a, I'll, I'll reserve the, as, as Chair Watchman says, the right to approve. On reflection, I think that that approach makes sense. It also, at this point, would make sense, we could have the commission next time vote to recommend a red line procedure set to council, then council only has to vote once, not twice. That would be more efficient. The other point that I would add for the commission to consider, that I heard four, if not six, support, was allowing greater discretion to the director to require a rendering. Right now, renderings are required for commercial projects, and they're, they're not required for other projects, and perhaps in the right kind of not single-family project, when a, a rendering might make sense. So it might be required for commercial, and then for non-commercial that is not single-family, uh, one single-family house, director may require rendering if warranted. Something like that would allow us to add that greater flexibility.
I think that's very helpful, Matt. And in addition to that, and our later uh, item in the agenda, you know, I've been troubled by the need for story polling and the material to show the story pole effect on some of the ridgeline cases that we've had to deal with, if you recall. You know, some of them are pretty senseless, and they are expensive, and they're obnoxious to the neighborhood in some cases where a photograph, or frankly, uh, you know, a meeting amongst the neighbors might even be a better tool of making people aware, particularly in a gated community on a ridgeline that no longer really is relevant. And we're gonna be talking about that in a little bit, but um, I think we have an opportunity to deal with the residential componentry here, and maybe even some of the commercial in light of that next discussion we're gonna have.
And as a, um, if I can jump in, Dennis?
Yeah, please do.
I, I, I agree with Maureen's uh, suggestion. And I would have no problem, um, Glenn and Maureen, if you want to take a look at what I prepared, just as a start. Mine is really more grammatical tidying up and a few questions than incorporating the suggestions we've heard tonight. But you could use my red line as, and people can green line or whatever it is you add to it as a starting point, and then add these ideas, and then get, get them to you without our exchanging things for Brown Act purposes. And based on this discussion, Maureen, and, et cetera, you can come up with probably a good redlined draft we're up to look at again.
I think that's a good way to go.
And Maureen, you mentioned you had a, a couple of comments as well. Some of them may be the same as John might have identified, but I would encourage any of you to submit your remarks to staff so that they could have a, a single go at this at this point. I think that's what you're saying, John.
Right.
I have a technical question though, and that has to do with the the mesh idea, which I, I don't have any problem with. But can the construction mesh, the plastic, if you've, if you've had to have to roll that stuff, it's heavy. And I know that mesh can be um, nylon fabric, that's, you know, a uniform color, an orange or whatever is the appropriate ultimate, um, I guess default in terms of color, whether it's colored flags or colored mesh or whatever. But um, Peter, you might be able to tell me from your engineering experience whether this stuff is actually worthy of being airborne. I mean, as a fencing material, it's, you want the weight in order to hold it on the ground around the oak trees or other things that you wanna protect. But if you put it up on a pole and the, and wind goes at fifty miles an hour, you're gonna lose everything.
Well, to be clear, Dennis, I'm a mechanical engineer, not a structural engineer, so I'm not gonna weigh in on that one. But I just suggest that we mimic a story pole ordinance of a neighboring community that has similar issues that we do. If we're gonna go with the netting, I'd say that we should take a look at Malibu's policy because they have ridge lines and winds and everything that we have here in Calabasas. And whatever seems to be working there should work here. If we wanna go with the, the construction netting, that's what we should follow.
Well, I'm worried about construction netting. That's the technical point I'm gonna make, is it, you know, if you're talking about, you know, weight per square foot of material, it's not gonna be an acceptable solution, I'm almost positive.
Well, and I just gotta say, Dennis, every time we talk about putting story poles up, we hear all these hardships, not always. When we're, when we're asked for a variance, we often hear hardships of structural engineering and difficulty to put these poles up. And it makes me wonder, if they have that much trouble putting the poles up, how much trouble are they gonna have putting the building up? I, I know we're asking a lot of them, but it's an important step to make sure that we, the decision makers, the neighbors, and every interested party can see the massing of the structure before we approve the project, so.
I'm not arguing against the poles or the procedures, I'm only suggesting the material is a critical factor here. And it's not just aesthetics. And Maureen, I'm sure you've heard us all. Go ahead, speak.
Just quickly, um, you do have a hand up from an aerospace engineer, so he might be able to help on this, but uh, given my structural background, that's an architect, a mesh or any other type of material, it's not just wind load and weight, but it's also water. There's a capacity of surface area. That's up, uh, your LA Commissioner Kraut's surface area and water. So you have that component which creates additional weight. And there's one other one, which is the material itself. How many times have you seen poles with these really saggy lines? It's the crepe paper the morning after your kid's birthday party. Cause uh, it stretches, it stretches in the sun, and it weights itself. And then you have another issue, which is um, you know, the viability of the little line at the top, which you want to be crisp. You don't want it hanging down five feet the next morning and staying there for six weeks. So a lot of different considerations. Um, but I would um, just remind the chair that Carla does have his hand up, so thank you.
I understand. And thank you, Carl, for sending your comments along if you're watching the show. Uh, I think we've had a productive discussion. I, I, Matt, I was gonna ask if, if there's anything that we need to act upon other than to give direction to staff at this point.
Uh, it's directed to staff, but I also would recommend that if Mr. Ehrlich wishes to speak, we would, we'd let him speak. Um, I know he's got his, his hand up. He may, he may wish to have added an additional comment beyond his written comments. And then it would be direction to staff to prepare a red line for a commission review at a meeting in July.
Well, it's just a, a recommended revisions to the procedures document. Isn't that what we're talking about?
Yes.
Referring to a red line, you know, amongst ourselves here, we understand what we're saying, but ultimately, we're not looking to strike anybody's information out. We're giving recommendations on how to make this more concise, accurate, and effective.
Correct. And, and to get some ideally uh, commission consensus or majority vote on what you recommend up to council.
Now, my gallery view does not allow me to see the hands of anybody who's in the public, which is. Now, my gallery view does not allow me to see the hands of anybody who's in the public who wishes to speak. Is there someone like Michael Klein that's monitoring the speakers?
Yes, good evening commissioners. There are three people right now in the public and only one hand up, and that is Mr. Carl Erlicks.
Well, then, why don't we, are we able to pass along that telephone conversation, or is it video?
He, when, when the commission is ready to move on to public comment, I will be able to enable him to unmute himself so that he could speak.
Okay, well, then, it's not a public hearing, but it is a public discussion. So I'm going to certainly allow, you know, Carl to bring his concepts to the fore.
All right.
I don't hear any of the, of the commissioners saying that they need to talk about any more of this at this moment, right? Good. Carl, you got the floor.
All right, and I will give, per the normal protocol, three minutes, is that?
That's fine.
Okay. So Mr. Erlich, in a moment, I will allow you to unmute yourself. So you will have to unmute yourself. Then you can start speaking. I'll set the timer for three minutes, and I will give you a 15 second notice that it's almost about to end.
And Carl, if you give us your name and city of residence for the record, we always do that.
All right, you may begin.
Carl, you're still muted.
I'm mute, I'm mute myself, is, can I hear you? Can you all hear me?
No, we can't.
Okay, I see a lot of heads going up and down, so I'll assume I'm online. I'd like to, first off, I'd like to thank you, Glenn, for the comments early on here that regarding my submittal. But I do have a few comments to make. The storyboards, as they're incorporated or as applied, think in terms of the West Village along Las Verges Road. They're there, but they don't emphasize the bulk and the mass of the proposed subjects. And I think the mesh of some sort would amplify that impact. Now, mesh will obviously add to the structural loads on the poles themselves. I think a qualified pole installer could make some very valuable comments to that, to that point. But, and I'm also thinking of the photos standing by the roadside with thousands of cars passing by. Who's going to look at them and absorb the photos? I think the mesh will more or less, more emphasize the bulk and the mass of the structure. Rendering, I think, should be wrapped into the soul process, because there's no definition, as far as I know, my amateurish way. I'm only an aerodynamicist, by the way.
Only.
The rendering, there's no specification of where the rendering should be. To my mind, it should be where the, the future building, the proposed building, is more recognizable, more, forgive the expression, seeable. The impact of that could be made determined. Who's going to stop and look at a picture, especially along Las Vegas Road? A lot of us have, several of us have tried to take photos of the story poles as they exist and go into PowerPoint and try to fill in the blanks. Well, that works for a closed community, but I think the mesh.
15 seconds left.
Okay, thank you. I think the mesh would emphasize that point of view. And I think this whole subject ties into the next subject, which I'm going to have some comments on, too, ridge lines.
All right, it is three minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Carl. And is there, Michael, is there anybody else who wishes to speak that you can see?
No, there is no one else with their hand up.
Okay. I think that the discussion has been fruitful. We know what we need to do legally and procedurally, and I have every confidence that our staff is going to be able to take this and prepare it for, I guess, our final review at our next meeting before we send whatever the document ultimately will be with its edits, et cetera, right, Maureen?
That's correct. It may not be exactly the next meeting, but be sometime in July.
Right. And the, I know the council is not meeting until August, in any case, so, you know, we'll be ahead of the game. I'm going to move along to the next item in that case. And it is item number three, and we estimated that it might be at seven o'clock. And guess what? That's where we are. This is a continued discussion. We've had minor discussions along the way, and we've had a number of cases along the way of dealing with the existing ridgeline issues and conditions in Calabasas. And we have a pretty elaborate report this evening. And who's going to give us that report?
I will.
Okay, the floor is yours. And I mean, let me ask you at the outset, is there action that we need to take? Or is this, in fact, an informational and discussion item?
It's not even for discussion if you don't want to. It's just to absorb, this is all your background material prior to coming forward to you to talk about how all of those pieces fit together on an approach to look at your hillside and ridge line protections.
Okay.
So, Michael, if I could share my screen?
Didn't have access to that.
It says the host has disabled participant screen share.
Okay, hold on, let me see.
Are you the host? Yep, we're good. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
I'll note for everyone that at the bottom, it's red one. I took the liberty today of adding a few more slides, and you'll see where they show up at the end of the presentation. It's 52 slides. Elizabeth Parker was quite ambitious in giving me 30 minutes to do that. I'm going to try to hit the 30 minutes. But if I need to pause at any point of long way, please let me know. As we had told you, we're going to take a look at this project that's referred to it through basically five different components. The first was the review of the city documentation. That was the 76 page Opus presentation, which was really fun for me to put together, really a history of the ridge lines through city documentation. Meeting two, what's supposed to be basically a best practices by looking at other cities. We're going to flip them, because we're not quite finished with number two. And we're going to do our mapping and few line exercises tonight to talk a little bit about what's out there that's sitting on your ridge lines. Eventually, we'll get to a point where we had anticipated public workshops. We're not to that point yet. Before we get to the, that, after your next presentation, we'll begin to discuss what the commission feels really it's necessary that they'd like to learn from the public. It could be nothing, it could be something. And then we'll bring that back in the form of draft for council consideration. This is your ridge line map. The red is the outline of the city, and the yellow is your ridge line. First thing that you'll notice is that we have a lot of ridge line, which is actually outside the city boundary. So we have no control over development, over any components of that. We may have an opportunity to look to see if there's a view blocking in a certain area. But it's unclear to me, I've found no explanation of why the original maps went this far outside of the city boundary area. So for today's purposes, what we're going to do is just look at components of the ridge line that are within the city itself. And we're not going to effectively study anything that falls outside of the city boundary in terms of what is on the ridge line, what does this map mean? We're going to start over at the east side of the city and travel over to the west side. So what we're going to do is basically follow this ridge line that comes down through this area. And we're going to go through piece by piece. One of the things that I'm going to do is Carl Erlick provided us comments earlier today with regard to a couple of areas that he noted. Number one is that, so we haven't paid attention to our ridge lines. And because of that, what I did today was revise my notes to go back and take a look at some of the communities and the dates of these communities to give maybe a different perspective to the public on why we have large tract developments in the riddle of ridge line communities. So let's start over here. First of all, colors. Green labeled parcels mean that parcels are effectively protected. They're either protected because for a water tank, they belong to Las Verges Municipal Water District. In other cases, the parcels are part of a larger tract community, meaning that they're either zoned protected or they're protected as part of the tract map itself. And then that there are other agencies, most notably State Parks, LA County are two of the big ones, even the city of Calabasas, who have control of the parcels. So along this particular ridge line, from this area all the way down to the northern end of the city, we effectively have a very protected ridge line. It runs long summit to summit parkway. You can see that the motorway itself has been developed, but the ridge line has not. That's typical in many of these areas. And that we're also going to point out where we have parcels that are in private hands that do have the potential for development. At the end of the overall view of the communities and the mapping, we'll go back and we'll study each of these individual parcels in a little bit more detail.
Maureen, let me ask you a question. Are you able to hear me?
Yep.
It's Dennis. What's the source of the mapping that we have? I'm noticing, in fact, that summit to summit motorway, as long as we've been a city, none of us ever refers to it as a motorway. And in fact, it's been a war cry to deal with that. So this is an LA County map from the 1980s, or even the 1960s, that is giving us what I'm calling prejudicial information. We need to actually, in our discussions, look at those preconditions that are indicated by virtue of the source mapping that you used in the first place.
This is from the city's contract services for mapping. We shared this mapping with the assessors office, Los Angeles County Assessors Office. And we will take notes on issues of labeling. If you see them, please send them to us. And we can go back and ask to see if there are any changes that are out there. But going back to this particular section of the ridge line, Mulholland Heights was a development that occurred beginning in 1987. So long before cityhood, long before there was any formal mapping of a ridge line in that area, the ridge line had already been effectively preserved and saved down along the line. At the end of Adamsville is this private property of about little over 40 acres, which takes up a person, the summit to summit, I'll call it trail, and then brings you up to Henry Ridge and other areas of unincorporated county. This is that portion of the ridge line as it moves from the east end of summit to summit and down into this particular area. You have two very large parcels here in this area. One is 40 acres, one is 103 acres. That straddle, summit to summit trail. Both of those properties are zoned hillside mountains, and they are eligible for development. To give everyone a flavor of where we are as well, this particular property backs up into the Wild Oneon Park area. This is the open space components at the end of Old Panga. And you can see the wibble wobble tea of Old Panga as it crosses through this particular area. The ridge line crosses through pieces here, Los Angeles County, so those are preserved. And when we come up into this particular zone, the parcels up here that the ridge line passes through are both in held by MRCA. And these are the three homes that the council did consider at the planet, excuse me, the planning commission considered back in 2015. Those homes surrendered construction at this particular time. So really focusing on these two large pieces, all of the rest of this ridge line in this particular zone is either protected or developed at this time. So we looked through here, as I look through those parcels that are undeveloped privately held. What I've done is I've marked them on the big map in blue, and we're going to leave them there, because that'll give you a flavor or picture when we get to the end of the tour of the ridge lines to let you know what concerns there might be out there that are remaining about undeveloped properties. So now we're going to go north of Mulholland. There's Mulholland Boulevard. So we're going to track this ridge line down through this area from the ridge all the way down, paralleling Mulholland.
Maureen, it's Dennis again. It is Mulholland Highway. LA County and LA City would love to have seen it as a boulevard all the way to Leo Correo Beach. And that's one of the motivations that we incorporated to stop in the first place. So Mulholland Highway is the territory and the name of that place. And there's a lot of lore connected to that that we'll have to talk about in ridge line management as well.
Beginning at the north end of the ridge line, that says, Calabasas Ridge, which is a gated community. You'll note that the ridge line here runs through properties. What's very interesting about the ridge line mapping about these tracks is that the streets themselves are actually parcels. So when you count parcels for the purpose of this presentation, we counted parcels that the ridge line went through, even if they were not a developed home. Even if they were, for example, pieces that were HOAs. We also counted them. If the zoning of that particular parcel protected it or was part of the trap, we labeled it in green. So here you have a northern portion of the ridge line, which is 100% developed. It comes through HOA area surrounding it. But right in here is a very small private parcel with some unique underlying expense. It appears that this tank used to be in this area and was moved up to a higher location at some point. This parcel may have been surplus and fell into private hands. But the zoning is unique, oh, what zoning, meaning it still does have a development, right? So you could put one house on this particular site. I don't ever recall the city having an inquiry on this property, but I do want to let you know, exists. There is access to it up along the southern edge of Park Belmonte as the roadway continues up to service the water tank up here. But the parcels all in. But the parcels all in this area from this point on down really are all protected, either protected through open space or protected by the fact that the water district owns the underlying properties. The Park South community down in this area was already a tract development by 1990. So prior to the city's incorporation. Uniquely though, even though as a developed tract, you see that at least this portion of the ridge line is intact. But as it dives south into the community, it goes directly through homes, through roadways to, to in particular. There are 10 parcels in that area. So you have both an actual rid line as well as graded ridge line. And this is an RIT zone, residential zone, and the roadways themselves are residential as well. At, once it leaves Park South, it actually goes through the upper portion of the mobile home community. So while this is technically one park or one site, there are numerous homes, individual rented lots up over here at the top that sit on top of the ridge line with actually some really wonderful views from the back. So this area, I didn't count by mobile home, I just counted by parcel. So the ridge line here is fully graded, but it does have a small natural piece just over here in this area. The mobile home park dates back to 1973. So this has been in place for some period of time. Once you come over here to Calabasas Hills, the ridge line here is protected. All of this zoning are privately on parcels by the HOA, but they are OSDR zoning. Calabasas Hills was a track community beginning to be developed in 1989. So again, everything you see in this particular area with even Park South, even though there was later home development, the tract itself was already graded out by the early 1980s and late 80s actually. So here we have just one small parcel. As that ridge line comes down and through this area, this is St. Andrews Road. There are a number, or excuse me, St. Andrews Lane. There are a number of parcels along this particular area. Some of them date back and were developed in 1988. Some as late as 2006. And here you have some portions of the ridge line at the top area, which are natural. But the majority of the ridge line that runs through this area has been severely altered and graded and developed. This particular parcel, if you all remember, not too long ago, I think it was 2017, this planning commission looked at the development of a home in this particular area. So that will leave intact this natural portion of the ridge line above. But there will be grading at placement of the home down in this particular area. As the ridge line moves south through here, we'll come to this as a demarcation point. There are nine parcels all fully developed, so the ridge line has been completely graded through that area. In that particular portion, it's a area of Calabasas Parks Estates. The earliest dating I could find to that development in this particular area was back in 1999. So that would have occurred likely through holdovers of county zoning for development in that area that may not have affected, been realized until probably the early to mid 90s. So to let you know, this is a portion that did occur while the city was a city. When you come over here into this particular area, Mountain Park Estates, this also is a carryover component of the city. We looked at it previously when we were looking at it as portions that traveled through the south of Mulholland area. But that development as well, it's long past us and early 1990s was already when grading was occurring in that area. But here, no developable parcels on a ridge line. We'll finally track the ridge line as goes down through Mulholland Highway. As you can see, additional grading that occurred south of this particular development. A house under construction right now along the ridge line. This date sets an entitlement back to 2014, 2015 era. That's only moving forward most recently. MRT has a component here, but I'll bring your attention to these three parcels. This parcel is 16 acres, this parcel is 3.3 acres. And this parcel actually straddles between Mulholland Highway going all the way back and up the hillside, 27.73 acres. This is the property that I think staff is most concerned about with regard to development along this corridor. We did have a proposal back in the early 2000s for a large development that took a look at about 10 to 12 homes down in this particular area. But also parcels up along the ridge line staff was unsuccessful in having the applicant modify the proposal to move, remove any housing in this particular zone. And the project did not move forward and the applicant did not pursue the project. But this parcel, especially in the lower area, not necessarily the ridge line, but in the lower area, does carry a potential for development. This particular parcel right now is owned by this house next door. We have had some issues of use by this parcel over here, but we have not had any inquiries or applications that I'm aware of with regard to grading. So this is the overview and we'll come back and look at these three properties in particular. So this is the component, that little piece, the leftover water tank property, we'll call it. We'll look at this small piece down here at the three larger properties with the one that straddles the roadway. And now we're going to look up into this area with only one parcel available. So you get a sneak preview of that particular piece. We're going to start along this component of the ridge line and follow it around to this edge. So beginning with this to point, this is probably some of the most dramatic views of our hillsides from the 101 corridor. Interestingly enough, I'll note for you that only half of our scenic corridor is even in the city. The other half is actually in Los Angeles County. So while we recognize the 101 as a scenic corridor, there are many locations which the view lines are actually from outside the county area, which is just rather unique. But there are along this zone, 40, excuse me, 48 developed parcels, which means that they have houses, streets, HOA components, open areas, and one protected piece, which is the big water tank, which is visible up at the top of, or from the 101 freeway.
Maureen, is that the Cordillera Tank?
Yes. As we continue easterly, or excuse me, westerly, there are 63 parcels that encompass the Oaks. And I apologize, I'm going to go back one because I want to give you dates on this development. West Ridge was developed in 1987. And Vista Point developed in 1981. So interestingly enough, by the time that we got our first ridge line map, all of this was developed. So it makes the question of how we got a ridge line map when the ridge line had been removed rather interesting. Steph believes that the original old mapping, as we talked about last time, was really from a USGS map from the early 1980s, so US Geological Survey. This component of the ridge line that goes up towards the 101 is completely protected either through protection under the HOA parcel or through Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy or through these two pieces right over here, actually both the Conservancy down along the way. As the ridge line moves through the Oaks and again, the Oaks development, really by 2002, you had development, but you actually had very early development in this lower area of the Oaks that dated back to 1988. So it, it, it kind of was an amoeba, it grew in chunks with the largest chunk occurring through city permits down along the way. Just a little piece over here, traveling through that large Santa Monica Mountains parcel that was dedicated to the Conservancy at the time of this development. And then the ridge line travels through two pieces here, belonging to the Water District. So nothing that is undeveloped along this area of the ridge line. As we travel from the water tanks, which are a little off the screen, down through this area, probably the most developed portion of the ridge line was in the Oaks Estates. I think it was only late last year that we took a look at an addition to a home in this particular area with story poles. But if you follow the ridge line through the estates and then coming back here through Calabasas Parks Estates, there's a total of 67 parcels which are developed down along the way. It travels through areas owned by the HOA. Three parcels in this particular zone and one additional parcel over in here. Again, this is the single family residence that we looked at. That's part of that lower Mulholland, I made the cut here for that lower Mulholland component we just looked at in this area. But I'll bring your attention to two privately held parcels. One being 9.4 acres with HM Hillside Mountains zoning. The other parcel here with Hillside Mountains zoning with no access. There is, this is a trail component up in this particular area. No roadway access, no connection to these two parcels up here. So I'll look at them in a little further detail down along the line, but that's why they've been referenced up in this particular zone. So from here, we'll go to the west side. Area. Excuse me. Here is the colony, the West Village project up in this particular area. And as the ridge line travels through here, it travels through one, two, three, four parcels that are in ownership of Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy. So no chance of development on those parcels whatsoever. Here's the fourth parcel that leaves the water tank area and travels down through Los Virginas Water District. So all of these components of the ridge line in this particular area are protected and there are no available sites for development. So we just looked at this upper portion when we moved down here as the ridge line moves parallel to Los Virginas Boulevard. First travels through another Santa Monica Mountains parcel. But there is parcel out way on the upper end behind the water district, 77.9 acres. This parcel routinely comes up for sale. It depends on, on which day it's put up for sale, but I've seen it well into the millions of dollars. But I have never seen it marketed for a tract development or for housing or even a single family home. It's usually marketed for Conservancy property. So in other words, it's a dedication property. It comes on and off the market. I don't ever recall in the 17 years I've been here of having a real inquiry, what can I do with this if I buy it? So it just sits. It has absolutely no access. There's not a road in any location anywhere near it. So it will probably sit for a long, long time over here. As the ridge line travels south, it primarily to the border, it travels primarily through Water District properties. It just skirts the edge over here of another Conservancy property. And just a little further to the south does skirt through one city-owned property in the southern end of the site. So with the exception of really very much landlord property up in this area, there's no potential site. And a very intact, wonderfully intact, preserved, probably the best preserved area of all the city's ridge lines. We'll jump further west. We'll take a look at the ridge line as it whistles and water holes on the outside of the city. This is Deer Springs. This is Lost Hill Roads. This is Los Virginas as it moves into Malibu Canyon area. And again, there, this is the old Curry Ridge property. All of this is city-owned. There is one small portion of the ridge line that skirts through this very odd kind of left for bits of private property, but it's all zoned OSDR. So the holding, it's there, but it does not allow any development, which is quite odd, but that's the way it is. So there's no chance of development of these parcels. The ridge line does travel through Los Angeles County in this particular area. So we'll travel north. Now we're up at the north end of Los Virginas. This is Mont Calabasas out over here. This is all National Park Service area. And the ridge line travels just a touch into park property and two areas. But again, no chance of any development within this zone. So that brings us to the big picture, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine opportunities for development. So let's look at these sites quickly so we can evaluate them. But before that, a summary. There are 271 parcels and that's on the day that I counted them. Give, give me a polling margin of 1% in either direction because it's really hard to count accurately when you're doing a lot of counting in a smaller area. So 218 park parcels are developed. So this is a numerical evaluation of where you are. So 80 So eighty percent of your map Richlines have stuff on them, be they roadways or houses. Or or they've been altered to create graded slopes, drainage areas. Forty-three of those parcels or sixteen percent of all of them. Are protected and that protection comes from either zoning or ownership by a private or public entity. And those are the ones that are most preserved down along the way, obviously. And those remaining, excuse me, ten parcels, it's actually ten. Are in private ownerships, undeveloped and largely natural Richlines. So they truly are ones to consider for how how you might go about strengthening the code to protect them. Taking a look at numerical evaluation at length. You've got. Four and a half miles, so forty-four percent of your total mileage. Which is fourteen point two miles are developed. Fifty-one percent, seven point four miles are protected, undeveloped. With the exception of an occasional water tank here or there. And five percent of the Richline is private ownership. And again, those are also quite pristine down along the way. So starting up here, we'll take a look at this parcel. Parcel number one, forty, forty-plus acres. You come up from Mulholland Highway and you wibbled and you wobbled. You get to the top of Adamsville, you'll see the remnants of an old gate. And you'll see a paved roadway that takes you up. To along summit to summit and then over here into Henry Ridge and other areas of. Of Los Angeles County. The parcel, this is the paved area that. Mysteriously got paved overnight, believe it or not, it started to erode and. About six months later, the property owner visited its property and wanted to know what happened. Who paved his property and honestly, we did not know, we don't use that roadway, so somebody did. But you can see it's a very pristine, a lot of very deep canyons. In this area, if it was to be developed, even though this is hillside mountains. It potentially has a capacity if somebody sought a subdivision of four homes. But it's very unrealistic to take a look at that. The property owner has occasionally put forward ideas. About a very dense development of up to forty homes on this particular property. Staff was less than encouraging about that and has considered him. If he is going to look at development to take a look at one home in this lower area. Of the parcel. Sometimes he he did at one point approach. Members of the Mulholland Heights community and their board to pitch this idea. I think it was back in two thousand and six under. A proposal called the Parisian Estates. So I'm not too sure where the Parisian part of this comes from, but. He did bring forward a similar proposal, perhaps. Maybe. A year ago. And again, we strongly encourage he abandon any ideas of subdivision. And instead focus on a modestly sized home somewhere at the lower area. Of this particular property in Lou. I'm giving you. Maureen played Seagull. And what I tried to do is work with Google Maps and give you. A general sense, this is a depiction, it's not accurate by any means. But this is Adamsville, this is the tank. This is our party house, if you remember, a few years back, we had problems with. Unique events here. But just as you reach the gates, you can kind of see how the forty acres lays out. And you can see that there's a potential area right in here where perhaps. It would be appropriate to take a look at a single-family residence. But certainly as she move up towards the map Richline up in this area. We believe that that would be a less desirable zone. So that's undeveloped parcel one, which does have. Access to a roadway, city roadway and potential for some level of development. But resource-rich, very resource-rich in your hillside. And mountainous zone guidelines. Have many, many controls in terms of development standards for consideration of these types of features. So well, next look to the two parcels. Behind. This home, here's Wild One Park, here's Mulholland Highway. Here's the school, here's the high school down in this particular area. So the two parcels here. Are both only accessible from summit to summit motorway. Those are, that is the only way to access this parcel. It does not hook up down here at the end of the easement area. You can see that there is remnants of what looks to have been either trails or motorways. At some point in time on this particular property. We'll kind of zoom in a little bit on this and you can see that remnant. Trail or access that once upon a time existed down onto here, but it's quite grown over now. On this piece of property. We have very, very erratic terrain. But I have, believe it or not, recently gotten calls on this particular site. For development of a track community. Again, we have discouraged it and I think the next picture will tell you why. This is the Maureen Seagull view, we'll call it. Here's Old Topanga. As it comes up and then travels down through the county. There is effectively a point in the road where it comes up through LA County property. And up to summit to summit roadway. Both of these properties straddle over that roadway. So whoops, I'm going to go back one. You can see here that the roadway and the properties go beyond that roadway component. So this is the first large piece, but you see the steepness of the property in this particular area. So in order to develop anything here, Commissioner Seacant, as a civil engineer, would probably gulp. If somebody asked him for a simple plan of what he would have to do. Because it would be, it would be required to begin to fill in these resource-rich canyons. Or to try to figure out some means of getting into less steep areas of this particular site. Same issue here. Your access is unclear, it's unclear if these parcels do or do not have access. At all off the Boulevard, but there is inquiries on this parcel. Again, what we have advised is to take a look at development in a zone. On right off of this area for a small or modest house in this particular area. And to discourage any development as it comes into view line beyond that point. So that, and again, a small one-house is probably all that could be. Developed from staff's viewpoint on this particular site. And on this site, I do not see or have heard of any development interest in that particular property. And it it, from my assessment, it's it's too hard a site for development and. Not a peep in seventeen years. So we'll move on. At the end of Park Belmonte, this is suspiciously looks like the outline for this water tank. So I think this is a remnant water tank site. It does have some paved easement area, which potentially could be abandoned by the Water District. Since the easement is more than likely back over into this particular zone. It has very little grading except for this portion where you can kind of see the remnants. Of where the water tank used to be. But here it's a picture of where it sits, these are, the view lot says you go up Park Belmonte. You get to a point where the roadway starts. You go up to the tanks here and just at that bend is this little site. I don't remember any inquiries that we have had in recent times. I believe that we did have inquiries perhaps a dozen years ago. Michael, have you heard of anything, Michael Klein, on this one?
On Park Belmonte?
Yes.
No, I have not heard of anything over there. Actually, what I, what I think used to be there is satellite and communications equipment.
Okay. The size would make it possible for a very small home. And your sewer extensions up into this area would be reasonable. Directly on a Richline, it's hard to go fifty feet above or down or under it. So this would be a potentially developable site at some point for someone, but no inquiries. So that's where we stand. As we mentioned, this is the site for which staff has most concern. The sort of the other two parcels, Dry Canyon, Cold Creek, Mulholland Highway. You can see that the Richline travels very close to Dry Canyon and Cold Creek in this particular area. This house dates back to the nineteen eighties. So it has been there for some period of time before the city mapped these Richlines. But you can kind of see a little bit of spillover to the top area. And you can see where the Richline is not accurately mapped through this zone. This parcel in the back has a very narrow flight clock connection. So any development that would occur up in this particular area would be. Would first need to perfect their access component. There is remnants of an old road up into this particular area and. Quite a mature grove of oaks down in this particular zone. So while this parcel has potentially some development opportunity. It's maybe more aligned to this current owner. And again, both parcels are in that owner's hands. But we'll take a Seagull Maureen view of this. This is Mulholland Highway down here at the bottom of the screen with Dry Canyon and Cold Creek up into that area. This is the parcel that is developed with one house. And the adjacent one, you could see even more clearly from this view. The old roadway that headed up into that area. But you can also see where there is not use on this that through erosion and. Nature that roadway is eventually moving back. You can see the very narrow thread that is. Really unusable to access this parcel on. The far, I guess, the west side. Of the Boulevard, we've never received any inquiries down over here. And then this very large parcel, twenty-seven acres. An area down here which certainly could support homes. But the Richline runs right about in here. You can see the old either trail or roadway that connects all of these parcels down in this area. So. The. Proposal that we had was for two homes up in this area and the remaining cluster down below. Again, Steph did not push forward on the project until. We got a proposal that removed the two homes, they did not and eventually. Did not move forward on this particular site. I'll notice one other thing about this parcel while we're concerned about it. Our concerns have greatly been. Supported, I guess, in terms of overdevelopment through the regional water quality control boards. Requirement for tier-one septic systems. You no longer can develop a house with septic pits. Pits are gone, days, the pit has passed. And you must now have leach fields and dispersment areas for those leach fields. Rather large, there is creek that runs behind this property and through these areas. So your setbacks and other components make large developments almost impossible. Or large subdivision areas. In this area, virtually impossible down along the way. We did not do any bird's eye views here because as you can see, there's no access to the two parcels. At the base of the Oaks Estates. So we see those, it's really having no development opportunities, parcels eight and nine. And this is kind of a close-up of the site, there are portions of the new millennium trail. That kind of zig and zag through this area, but again, no, no roadway system. No access whatsoever, so. And then finally, the landlord parcel behind the Water District. Huge marketed often for Conservancy dedication. So that. Perhaps for somebody, it's a very worthwhile. Parcel to acquire for gifting to an agency, perhaps to enhance one's proposal. For a subdivision somewhere, but we don't see this parcel moving at all or in any way, shape or form. In conjunction to any development within our city. So this is a. Kind of an overview. Of what we consider to be the parcels. Their acreage, whether or not they have access at all and their status at the Richline down along the way. We're going to quickly just kind of go through the complications of our code with regard to the Richlines. Because we've talked a lot about the fact that the majority of the Richline has developed. And so the question of whether or not we should remap those Richlines will not one that you need to speak up today. This is information to take in and just to ponder on as opposed to have any action tonight. But let's pretend this is Mount Maureen in its original form. And Mount Maureen had a true Richline at some point in time, it was there. And then. A developer and their civil engineer came through and tamed the Richline into. More manageable. into more manageable, flat sites for development. So this material either went it to a cut and fill mode or in some cases got hauled away. But our ridge line point continued. And then it got developed. It got developed with houses down along the way. What's interesting as you look at this is how now our requirements for the 50 feet now start to play in. There was the old ridge line used to be there. But when you start to take a look at a 50 foot proposal, even though this is the lot that we focus on that has the ridge line mapped through it, in theory, there are homes within that 50 feet on either side of it. So one could interpret that we need clearer, or one could state that we need clarifying ridge information on the ridge line as to whether or not it does or doesn't affect everything that's 50 feet around it. Because if so, you're going to have perhaps just from this alone, maybe another 300 homes that are going to find themselves on ridge line. And when you go 50 feet below, that that's the clearance area. Take a look, all of those homes are not below 50 feet of the ridge line. So, so these arbitrary 50/50 numerical values to placement in our code need to have great clarity if they are to remain. So everyone get that part? Yes?
Yes.
We'll move on. The other thing I want to point out is the actual ridge lines themselves, we know that they aren't there. But there's another problem. Even if we map them accurately, accurately, would it even matter? And so now we'll take a look since Maureen's seagull bird view again. Here's the 101 freeway corridor. And above it is the ridge line. But if you start to take a look, the ridge line is actually not in the area where you see homes. It's in that portion beyond because this lot is slightly higher than that lot. Because that's where the old mountain used to go up and then come back down again. So when you come down here, the seagull's going to land and you look up at the top of the hill. In some areas you can see homes, but those homes where they exist are not the ridge line. So you can go up and down the 101 corridor and never see the ridge line, even though there are protections for it, requirements to rebuild it, et cetera. The only portion of the ridge line visible from the 101 is a couple of homes right here along the tank. This set of homes, I'll go back, or actually this set of homes right here. This grouping of homes is visible. This grouping of homes visible up in here, up in here, but the actual ridge line homes, a very small component. And this is probably one of our most important scenic corridors. The good news is that all that mountainside is protected. That's why a hillside and ridge line code is coupled with together, the hills and the ridge. You can't really protect one without the other. So that's that whole component, just officially going back to what happened to Mount Maureen when the homes were built. You can no longer see where that actual ridge line map was or occurs. It's just unavailable for many of our scenic corridors. Here's a view of it. I don't pretend that this is accurate mapping. I would call it descriptive mapping for you of where the ridge line sits inside the Oaks itself. The water tank up here has a portion of the ridge line that straddles through it, but then it drops down the hill and does this wibbly wobbley. And there is no view line of this entire area. Houses that are prominent houses from the 101 corridor are this row in front. You occasionally see them, but you will never see where the actual ridge line is behind. So it comes around the corner into the estates. Yes, visibility in this far, far side, but the majority of it from this point on, none, none whatsoever. This portion of the ridge line that comes up and down has to go down quite a distance before there is visibility from Los Virginas roadway. And, and part of your other problem is even if you could see this ridge line component for a continuous ridge line map. So you could be in a deep, dark pit on a ridge line and you would have to screen yourself from view. It's unique. One of the things that we're working on in the next presentation is showing you what other cities do in how they map a ridge line down along the way. So summary, 80% of your ridge line parcels, 44% of the ridge line has been developed. It's done, no chance of restoration whatsoever. 43 parcels, 16% of everything, 51% of the ridge line is protected. There's nothing that you need to do to enhance or protect that portion of the ridge line. It's there, it's largely intact. And there is no particular need for protections of those parcels. And even for mapping along those parcels, because it is an intact ridge line, maybe a little grading occurred, but the mapping there is not a concern, it's not an error. Then finally, 4%, 5% of the length are those 10 parcels remaining for which really maybe six have potential and maybe three have higher potential of those six for development. So that's the end of my presentation, but I'll take questions. And can, can I stop sharing my screen? And, and, and this is food for thought. Peter, I don't know where Dennis is. Dennis, should I yield the chair to you, but no one in the chair, so.
He's coming back. Peter has to unmute.
I had to disappear because the daylight went away and you couldn't see me. I look like the masked bandit here. We could actually have quite an extensive discussion at this time. And I heard from Maureen that there was another phase.
There's two more phases, correct?
I was going to say, and I know several of us have raised comments about, I guess, what the implications are for long range planning and also quality of life issues that are debatable depending on where you live and what you hope to see the committee look like in five or 10 or 20 or 50 years, if you're around that long. And that's going to be stimulated by what you've presented. But if 218 parcels have already essentially obliterated what we thought we were doing in preserving ridge lines. And we have 10 parcels that have some potential threat of development under our current rules and regulations. The discussion, you know, could be quite extensive without an awful lot of purpose at this point, to my way of looking. And I've talked with one or more of our colleagues over the years actually about what is it that we hope to preserve? I'm looking at the ridge line that isn't on any map. It's next to Eddingham. And you don't even think about a ridge line until you get up to the top of Adamsville on my end of town. But the ridge line that is, you know, in my view, as I speak and look that way and point, that's as significant to me and to my neighbors and to the Mulwood community as anything that might happen on Summit to Summit Trail. It's going to be an interesting discussion. And it's probably something that is a precursor to, I guess, the requirements of and the timing of the beginning of our next general plan update, which I don't think is actually due until probably 2030 or 2035. I know that every 10 years, you're supposed to be looking at where you are in your general planning trajectory. And it would be helpful to know what that is from staff. And to get some idea also of what the view of the city council is when it comes to dealing with issues of this magnitude. That's my take on it so far. And since I've been sharing the podium more with my colleagues than, than saying anything, I want to get my two bits in first. But how do the other commissioners feel? Yes, Peter?
So first of all, Maureen, I want to say that was a great presentation. I appreciate the thoroughness and all the detail. And I think it does cover the fact that the mapped ridge line is not accurate enough for us to really be doing something with right now. And the portions that are left probably pale in comparison of the cost of redoing it. One of the things that I asked in the last presentation though, and maybe it was made to Tom, maybe you weren't there. But we, we saw the yellow line at the end of your presentation, and I like to call that the perceived ridge line. The one that our residents think of is the ridge line when they're looking up from the 101 or from any of our other scenic corridors. And in looking at your presentation on pages 13, 14, 15 or so, 13 and 14, I counted about 80 houses that are on the perceived ridge line that are not on the map ridge line. And I'm wondering, are you doing a deeper study as well into the perceived ridge line? So that as we look at the potential of remapping this, doing a new map ridge line from my perspective, isn't to address what was on the old map ridge line. It's what's on the new map ridge line that's going to be more significant and more impactful to our community.
We got a preliminary number from RingCon to have their engineers remap just what we have now. It's about $10,000. So there is a significant amount of money that I would tell you this fiscal year, you're not going to see. And maybe next fiscal year, you're not going to see. But staff has looked preliminarily into what are the perceived view lines from the scenic corridors that require protection? And maybe ridge lines could turn into view line protection areas or some other component of that thought as you look to either tackle, drop or tweak, modify, completely change this current system.
Thank you.
And may I note one other thing? I drove along Mulholland Highway. And I think Robert Yalden's Public Works team has done a fantastic job of planting that to the point that you cannot see a ridge line from just about anywhere on it. It is beautifully green and impossible for me to find the ridge line. So I didn't even try a view line to provide to. That's another interesting issue. Your scenic corridor components all call for them to be country roads with lots of trees. You're, you're, it's removing the scenic from the corridor, adding trees, so.
Well, and I appreciate that certainly as we look from our scenic corridors at the ridge lines, they might be shielded by landscape. But I think one of the ideas of preserving the ridge lines and not a view line in the beginning is we see them from our trails and from our other homes in the area and from so many other locations too. So certainly we have, you know, two applications of this, one from our scenic corridor and one from preserving our ridge lines. And they work together, but they're, they're viewed from, from many different locations.
And I would just offer that the protections right now in your general plan are from the scenic corridor. So that is your evaluation standpoint. So coming back to Dennis Washburn's point, to reopen that component is a, could certainly be a recommendation that we could look at. But it's, if you're going to reopen the general plan and the whole role of the scenic corridor as protection of view line and open that up, that's a huge shift in philosophy and change.
Yeah, can I ask you a question, Maureen? What are we obligated or what are you, the staff members obligated to do with this issue?
To have the commission bring back recommendation to the council on what to do. And the nucleus of this is to answer the question, what should we do with ridge lines that are in the wrong place?
Yes, Mark? Yeah, I thank you again, as Peter said, Maureen, that was a very, very thorough presentation. And in fact, I enjoyed reading beforehand your PowerPoint because there was a lot, so much information in it. I think that it highlighted the issue that I've had it on several applications. And primarily, I think the most obvious one was there in the Oaks where the old ridge line runs through the middle of the subdivision. And yet we are reviewing applications for a remodel or an addition and trying to force that landowner to apply those, those ridge line criteria for alternate siting. It makes no sense. And I, I forgot the number, but I think that we queried one of those applicants as to how much money they were and time they were spending going through that process, really to no end. It was not, it was completely illogical. And, and so I think that the, that there should be an adjustment and amendment to either our criteria or to the ridge lines themselves to eliminate those very obviously misplaced, completely developed ridge lines. On the other hand, I think that there are some ridge lines that are visible as your graphics displayed there primarily on Vista Point and maybe some in the Oaks and in West Point, West Ridge, that are, they're, they're homes that are visible. And I would like to hear back and be reminded of the protections that are in place and afforded by the scenic corridor that are different than what might have been afforded by the ridge line. So if, if somebody came in with a, with a request to modify, add or adjust their existing home, they'd be allowed to do whatever their, you know, whatever their increase in square footage could be. But how, how are we, are we losing anything in our ability to control the visual there to the scenic corridor by eliminating the ridge line since it's already developed? So I want to be careful not to, not to eliminate ridge lines that might afford some protection to us in a view shed, but still eliminate, I'd be completely in favor of eliminating, especially that one in the middle of the Oaks, which makes no sense at all. But there, and there are other ones, but, but at least that one. And to save those applicants that time and money and our frustration of having to deal with those applications.
And I'll just say that I completely concur that this, this is one of those situations in which you pull on one string and you pull on another and another, and you have to re-weave a coat. And it's many components of the coat. It is the scenic corridor protections. It is hillside and mountains protection. So you have site protections adjacent, and then you have view protections because of the scenic corridor. Both of those need to be looked at in tandem. I think we'll give you a new set of ideas to I think will give you a new set of ideas to think about during our next presentation to kind of open your eyes to what other cities have done in tackling exactly the issues you're talking about.
One of the things that's important to all of us, I think, is looking at the origins of some of these things. The scenic corridors that we enacted literally on April 6th in 1991, they were almost a desperate move to try to stop the, you know, the amount of damage that was being done by county policy and state policy to, you know, the region that we live in and love, but that's 30 years ago. And we were limited to what we could say. We didn't even know how we were going to implement a so-called scenic corridor on Mulholland or on the Calabasas Road or 101, you know, highway complex or Lost Virginus Road for that matter. And then we, we added at the tail end, Old Topanga Canyon. What is that? Is that, you know, from Mulholland Highway or Mulholland Drive? And is it Valmar or is it Old Topanga Canyon where you can't see a ridge line anyway, no matter where you live? So, so many of those things, they were done almost with expedience in mind as opposed to good planning and long range consequences anticipation. So at this point, my, you know, my wish is that we would look at instead, where do we want to be in 10 years and 20 years? And let's skate to where the puck is going to be as a hockey player has once said, as opposed to, you know, trying to shoehorn policies into glens and valleys that don't make any sense to almost any of us at this point. And they're literally causing suffering, economic and, you know, environmental and sociological suffering, you know, for a lot of folks who are, are citizens.
Just a brief comment. I want to make sure that we don't, you know, miss the forest or the trees. As long as I'm on the commission, I want to do everything we can to preserve existing real undeveloped ridge lines, period. Now, we have to do that in a way that doesn't interfere with lawful property rights, but from this presentation, it doesn't sound to me like there are that many of what I just said, real existing pristine ridge lines.
That's true.
So let's focus on what we can do to do that. As to Peter and Mark's point, which I think is very valid, which is there are these other things. I don't care what we call them. They may not be the real ridge lines. They may be perceived view lines or real view lines. Let's tackle those too. I mean, that, I agree with Mark and Peter, those are real attractive, even though they may have homes on or near. We ought to do things that, that protect them as much as possible for what's left of them. And so passing rules, regulation, lawful ordinances, rules and regulations that protect against those ridge, those real, at one point in time, real ridge lines from being further deteriorated, we ought to do that. And then as to all those other things you said, because they're, they're protected, they're real ridge lines and they're protected because they're on Water District or Santa Monica Conservancy, it's not waste time. I mean, they're protected. That's my view.
Yes, Michael.
So I just want to commend Maureen on that, that presentation. It's just amazing and all the work you put into it is just, just, just wonderful. Thank you for that. And I agree with all the comments the commissioners have made because I don't understand, well, I understand why, but the, it seems like an undue burden on homeowners in erstwhile ridge lines to have to comply with rules that don't, don't make any sense. And we, I've even seen a couple in my time up in the Oaks and it's, and we're trying to contort what they have to do. It just doesn't make any sense. By the same token, I remember when I was on the planning commission in 2000 and St. Andrews Lane was not considered a significant ridgeline and yet it's visible all over the eastern part of Calabasas from both Calabasas Park and, and Mulholland. And so there are some areas which have, whatever you want to call them, view lines, which are very significant and should be addressed, but we don't seem to have the, we don't have a way of incorporating that right now, I guess. So I think that should be addressed too.
That is why I asked the question about obligation, you know, what are we obliged to do and who's obliged us to do that? And that's the argument I think that we need to bring to the fore as we develop the next phase or two of this assessment, rather than pursuing this as if we've determined that we're going to try to preserve those 10 lots, you know, at the expense of everything else that we've been talking about in the way of value for the community.
And I will pipe in, I agree 100% with what John said. And, you know, let's, let's put our energies towards accomplishing what we want to accomplish, but in a meaningful way and not waste time with things that, that essentially will have, having done them will have absolutely no meaning. And this is our opportunity, I think, Michael. You mentioned there are things that, that whether we call them view sheds, whatever we call them, the things we want to get to, this seems to be the time. You know, this is going to be our opportunity to protect what we need to protect in a very real practical manner.
You said, you know, an interesting terminology in calling it a view shed analysis. And obviously we don't have any view shed or view protection laws as such, but also can't ignore the fact that, you know, view sheds are a result of watershed and geomorph geological action of, of the planet for crying out loud. So all those issues do matter. We put all the railroads and all the highways, you know, where the water flows because the water has done a lot of the work for us in dealing with the grading and highway development and rail traffic and bus ways and all the other stuff. Our territory is very unique. Not only is it ancient in a lot of ways, but it's, it's been preserved almost by luck. I mean, the bunch of us on the screen right now worked real hard for the past 30 or 40 years, you know, to protect areas like this and have the opportunity to say, isn't there value in this? And the ridge line views are extremely valuable, the watershed views, you know, they inspire. So if we, if we're working on an obligation from a state agency or a federal agency or our own early action to try to save as much as we could of the territory to at least have the material with which we could do a future. I mean, we're at that point now and we have the capability and the budget and the consciousness to make this happen. And that's why I asked the question about what are we obligated to do and by whom, Maureen? And Matt, actually you can help us with that too. I mean, because we're making a lot of decisions on the basis of housing elements and, you know, whether we're going to build 200 units or 2,000 units or 4,400 units in the next 30 years, you know, how are we going to cope with that kind of impact on the environment that we've worked so hard for 30 years to preserve?
So the short answer on the obligation is there's no obligation to protect view sheds or ridge lines in state or federal law. Instead, the city council, the community, the people have made that our obligation. And so we have flexibility in how we wish to do so. We do, as you noted, have an obligation to, through the RENA process, zone for sufficient housing to meet our RENA demands at the various income affordability levels and how to balance those two goals will be the challenge over the coming year and a half.
Maureen, you were going to make a comment?
I just wanted to urge you Chair Washburn that Mr. Ehrlich has his hand up and it's entrusted in speaking.
Okay. Are there any other comments or questions from commissioners before we take public comment? Okay. Then Michael, are you still with us? Michael Klein, and can you help us, you know, bring Carl back to the fore?
Yes, Chair, I am still here. There are still three people in the public, but only one hand is raised and that is Mr. Carl Ehrlich. So I will go ahead. Mr. Ehrlich, I will allow you to speak. You will have to unmute yourself. Yes, and please state your name and I will give you three minutes.
Okay, I can speak. My name is Carl Ehrlich. I had 11 Calabasas for the last four, over 50 years. As I mentioned in my handout, I think some of you referred to, why not just abandon the whole current ridge line and scenic corridor philosophy and go to a new one, or more or less new, of view lines and view scapes or whatever the word is that you want to do. I, in my handout, I presented an example of sightlines from 10 degrees in the center line of the road, any road, to a hilltop. Not a ridge line, but a hilltop. And limiting the building to something below that view line. I, I use the example of seven and a half degrees. Those are all arbitrary, of course, at this point in time. And that's the way the Empire State Building was built in New York City in 1931, 32, something like that. They determined how much volume that they had available to build and they filled it up. Now, I suggest that we apply the same thing to the roadways and big, small and indifferent as a proposal to say, hey, view to the ridge line and then three quarters of the way up, stop building. If you follow my thoughts. In my illustration, I have a, several section cuts through a proposal, proposed development. Obviously, the nearby buildings from the viewpoint would be lower and the buildings way away from the viewpoint originally, originating viewpoint would be higher, maybe even, forget the expression, four stories. And I'd be inclined to suggest that we explore that approach and abandon the ridge line as a, because that is a point, the line of the sand, which has been completely ignored anyway. And, and scenic corridors, which just haven't very limited, okay? And start all, start from new. I think some of you, several of you thankfully have adopted something like that. Okay, I'm done.
I have three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Carl, and thanks for sticking with us and paying attention. That's a really good thing. Maureen, what do we need to do from this point forward?
Nothing. This receiving file, what we will be doing is posting this, what we've already posted for the agenda item, this revised report. We do have a project page for ridge lines, so we'll get this material up there with the link to this meeting, make it available to the public. What we are trying to do is make the next series of presentations before we get to a discussion point up and posted for the community because we don't have the in-person meetings yet. We probably won't for many months. So what we are doing is eventually working to a point where we can have a broader discussion that includes the community ideas like Mr. Ehrlich's coupled with yours because at one point we're going to need to make a recommendation to the council and probably workshops as well, but you can imagine how you, you can't hold a virtual workshop very well. So the question is, what could we do if this pandemic keeps us in this mode for a period of time? Also want to let you know, we're going to sneak in the next best practices meeting on July 9th. And we will potentially come back with you with more information about view scapes because view scapes could be, we don't know anything about this yet. We'll find out what other cities may have creatively done, but that may require a fourth best practice meeting for us other than the one that we are faithfully working on for July 9th. So we'll keep you updated on that. If I could segue Chair Washburn, just to complete my director's report while we're on it.
Please do.
You have a kickoff meeting for your housing element on July 16, 2020. It will be like this report informational, no decisions will need to be made. What it will be is a kind of baseline tutorial. What is housing element? Why are we doing this? What is RENA? What are the laws that apply that are new since the density bonus and ADUs that now have to be factored into the work of this commission? So all it is, is I would say an educational tutorial both for the public, but the law especially for the commissioners as you begin the tasks of moving forward to select sites of building your housing element. We feel that it's a good time because it's an opportunity again where we can get a presentation provided to the commission, have people come back, look at it, look at the material, send staff questions, comments if commissioners in fact want to come back and do more tutorial work, we can. But there is a lot behind this housing element that is going to need to be carefully considered as we move ahead to develop a plan to bring back to the council for their consideration. So July 16th, I know we have one commissioner that may not be able to make that meeting, but again, because it's information, it's going to be going forward and posted and the film available to both that commissioner and the community, we feel comfortable in moving ahead. So that's what's going on there. The city council will be considering, among other legal issues out there, this Wednesday, June 24th, an update on where Senate Bill 1120 is. Senate Bill 1120 is making its way through the legislature.
What's the number on that again, Maureen?
1120.
Thank you.
Senate Bill 1120. There is a staff report currently posted. Effectively, what Senate Bill 1120 does is allow you to take a lot, let's say your home, and if you have 1,200 square feet or more, you can split it off to a new lot and build a new house there. So right now you can take a house and build a ADU effectively making it a duplex. This would allow you to take leftover area of your lot and create another house and duplex. So your single family residence suddenly within a period of about four or five years becomes a quadplex. So it's a density driven, easy solution to building more housing. One of the things we know about housing, especially in community like ours, is you have large homes with an aging population, seniors like me are your fastest growing demographic. And I know that I am guilty as well. I have a four bedroom house and I only use one. I have a four-bedroom house and I only use one. So I have excess space, excess space in homes. And this is bills like this try to address creative or better use of that excess space to put it towards housing opportunities for others. So it's a very interesting bill. And we'll be providing the council with information on that. And I encourage you to look at that meeting of June 24th and follow this particular item. So a lot of legal issues in play for the housing element. We'll start you off, see you on the 16th, and then move on from there. That concludes my presentation.
One quick further update.
We're going to change our slogan from the last of the old west to the wild, wild west, I think, in the housing arena. And I can also tell you that the obligation is clearly from the outside, even though we have our own internal obligations to ourselves. But Housing and Community Development, or HCD, and SCAG, the Southern California Association of Governments, have been given the responsibility of apportioning this obligation to deal with the housing needs and interests of the state. So thinking it'd be as easy as trying to figure out whether we call a ridgeline a ridgeline or a view line or it's valuable to protect, it's going to be a nightmare, but we'll see. I'm sorry, Matt, I interrupted you.
No worries. Just a quick update on Senate Bill 1120. It did pass out of the Senate Provisions Committee. The hearing was today. They just posted the unofficial results. There was some hope that it might die in committee. That failed, so now it goes to the full Senate, who must pass it out to the Assembly by the end of this month.
Could I ask, Matt, what exactly was it dividing? I mean, does it create two lots?
In short, it allows every single-family lot to be subdivided into two single-family lots.
Regardless of the size of the lot?
It has a couple of exceptions, but the general rule is every single-family lot gets to subdivide into two with some exceptions. We're still sorting through exactly how we could use the exceptions to limit its impact, but it's a pretty broad bill.
And if I could direct all of you to take a look at my short staff report, which also contains the draft language of the bill, I think you'll find it a very interested reading. And if you watch the report, I'm going to elaborate on the pros and cons as the council considers whether or not it wishes to take any position on this particular bill.
So could an ADU theoretically be split off into a separate lot?
Theoretically, yes. And then you could then add one more ADU each.
Right, right. That's the quadplex, but just, okay.
And then get two more, plus the junior, you get three. Running out of fingers.
I'm just trying to comprehend this, okay?
We can all become landlords.
Of our own backyards.
Oh, man.
John, I'm thankful to all of you for bearing through delays to the ridgelines. I just want to leave one last thought. One of the things that the city council did as they recognized the ridgelines in the developed communities were cumbersome and nonsensical is they adopted the county allowance for up to 1,200 square feet. As an addition, that was kind of a temporary finger in the dam that took care of the issue of the majority of small additions or improvements that we've seen on properties that are on map ridgeline. So with that, there was not strong urgency. The staff apologizes that this has been a little herky-jerky. We've been doing other priorities of the council and projects along the way. But we thank you to take a look with this time catching up.
All right. Thank you very much for the report. And Matt, thank you for your advice so far. Are there any final comments or announcements from the commissioners?
Thank you.
And Michael, I will just ask one more time. Did anybody else along the way, as we said, we would have potential for public comment at the end of the meeting? Did anybody identify themselves as needing to talk?
There are no other hands raised right now.
Okay. Yes, Matt?
One further quick point, just in case folks are also watching. Another aspect of the council agenda next week is a resolution confirming what has been the commission's practice for the last 10 years to meet on the first and third Thursdays. There's an old resolution on the books that defined it as the second and fourth Thursdays. That's been fixed.
And also, our meeting time has been confirmed at 6:00 as opposed to 7:00.
Correct.
And we want to thank Commissioner Kraut for spotting that error. What happened was the council changed its dates, but then they never changed us to be alternating dates. And so Commissioner Kraut spotted that. We did not. So we've been having regular meetings, which should have been special all along since, I don't know, since 2016, I think. But anyway, we're fixing it.
We live and learn. All right. I would only make one last comment. And for all of you dads and all you moms who have to put up with us dads, Happy Father's Day on the 21st. And I hope that you have a rewarding day. And everybody who's watching the program, give some respect to those dads out there. They work hard and they love you all. So if there's nothing further, then I'm going to adjourn the meeting.
Can I just ask one quick question, Dennis? Our next meeting is the 16th, so the 9th is canceled. I didn't know if that was a certainty or not.
No, the 9th will move forward with Phase 2 or Phase 3 of this ridgeline report.
Okay, so we have a meeting on the 9th.
It may not be our final background one, given the discussion tonight, but we will move forward, at least give you best practices on ridgelines as we've judged them from other cities.
All right, so we have a 9th.
How about that? Food for thought.
6 o'clock on the 9th of July and 6 o'clock on the 16th of July.
Okay.
What about July 2nd?
July 2nd has been canceled.
Okay, thank you. I missed that detail.
Don't fill it.
Nope. Take a little time off.
Thank you all for participating tonight and putting up this.
All right. Happy Father's Day, you guys.
All right, thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
Just saying it's noon.
Bye-bye.
Meetings adjourned.